Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, December 17th. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing, "Oh, Canada."
Oh, man's native land, true patriot love, in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to an alumni of our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. I think hopefully we're all in sync now with our audio and our camera and our singing. Our singing is never actually in sync. I'm not sure that that's ever happened once, but hopefully for our meeting we'll be in sync. Can I get an adoption of the previous council meeting minutes, please? Councillor Minhas.
Mayor Given, I move the council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held on November, sorry, held on Monday, December 3, 2018 as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Minhas. Are there any errors or omissions in those set of minutes? Anything that we need to change before we adopt them? Seeing nobody highlighting anything, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carried and then I'll look for an adoption of the minutes and we had a couple of deletion, or sorry, the agenda, excuse me, adoption of the agenda and I think we had a couple of deletions. Councillor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move the adoption of the agenda with the removal of items 5.1 and 6.1.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Blackburn. Just for council's information, the Catholic School Board had planned to come this evening. They have their regular Catholic School Board meeting and so we're organizing a time for the Catholic Board and council to get together in the new year. And management, I think, is currently working with the proponent of the Arbor Hills to outline plan to look at some alternate solutions as well. So we may see those coming back at a future council meeting, but were there any other discussion or debate on the motion to adopt the agenda as amended? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well and that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting for anyone in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. You don't have to let us know ahead of time that you're coming, but we certainly appreciate it. And there was one delegation that let us know ahead of time that he wished to present and that was Mr. Robert Engen. I think, Robert, you've been to City Hall before, if I remember correctly. Come on up, come on up. And my understanding is you wanted to present with respect to the City of Grand Prairie support for the oil and gas sector. Come on down and welcome. We tend to have our delegations at about five minutes, but if the presentation goes off anything like the event on the weekend, we may need to give you a little extra time after that amazing grassroots event.
Honestly, before I start, I've been in Grand Prairie for 15 years and yesterday kind of reaffirmed why I call Grand Prairie home, why I love this town. So very simply, I'd like to make the motion for this council to draft a letter of support for the oil and gas industry and pipelines as well as the people involved in this industry. It's quite obvious how oil and gas affects our town and I think all the support we can legislatively through city, province and the country, we need it as an industry. So I'm just asking for you guys to give us a little hand here.
Absolutely. Well, I have a feeling, I know that Councillor Bressi was able to attend the event on the weekend, not everybody else was, but certainly we've been able to support motions at our provincial association a couple of times and a few other advocacy events. But was there, so specifically some letters that you wanted to see us write or?
I'd just like to see a letter of support, as I said, for oil and gas industry. If we could forward that to our local members of parliament, our MLAs, as well as the premier and the prime minister.
Okay, fair enough. Any questions for the delegation? Councillor Clayton.
Thanks for coming tonight and appreciate the work that people put together, put in to get to yesterday's event together. I unfortunately wasn't in town and was unable to attend. I did have a question though, in regards to the letter of support you're looking, is it specifically in Bill C69 or is there just general support for industry? What specifically are you looking for?
It's general support for the industry. It's, we don't want to politicize it. It's support for the oil and gas industry and for pipelines.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Clayton. Any other questions for the delegation? I'm just wondering, Councillor Tool. Councillor Tool.
Yeah, I just got a comment. I know that as councillors, we head to Edmonton and other areas of the country, do our, through our jobs and we continually poke the berry, you might say. So we can formally do it with a letter. That'd be a good idea, but we do, we do this on a regular basis. So thank you very much for coming and I was working yesterday to support the oil industry too, so those guys go back to work and that's what I was doing. So thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Councillor Tool. I'm just wondering how we might be most effective and I'm wondering, Mr. Bork, do you have, what, Bill C69 is obviously one of the hottest topics that has an ability to have an impact on the development of pipelines. Do you have a sense of what stage that bill is at and how the city might get to people who have an ability to have a direct influence on that?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Bill, Bill C69 was recently sent to the Senate Environment, Energy and Natural Resources Committee on December 12. That would be an opportunity for council to influence the current debate going before, before the senate and a letter to them would be appropriate through the committee. There are two Alberta senators on that committee.
So maybe we can, when we deal with the delegation business, it's at the end of our agenda, strangely. And so maybe council, if we are going to take an action on this, my recommendation would be that we go specific as well to that senate committee so that they know our position as well. Was there anything else? Any questions for delegation? I'm not seeing anybody else. Mr. Engen, thanks very much. As you heard, we, the way our agenda's set up, we deal with the delegation business towards the end, but certainly I believe council's heard your issue. Thank you. Was there anybody else that wished to come and address council or present to council? As long, as long as it's not the subject of a public hearing. I know that we do have one public hearing for the Northern Lights area structure plan and if there was anybody here to speak to that, you'll get an opportunity during that public hearing. But was there anybody else that wished to address council this evening? I don't see anybody rushing the stage tonight and so we'll just remind the community that this opportunity does exist at every regular city council meeting and we're always happy to have visitors come in. So we will move on into public hearings. We'll go to item 6.2, Northern Lights Area Structure Plan and Bylaw C1371. I'd call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are recommending that council adopt the Northern Lights Area Structure Plan by giving bylaw C1371 three readings tonight. The Planning and Development Department prepared the proposed area structure plan to, for land recently incorporated, incorporated into the city of Grand Prairie through the recent annexation. The area structure plan will enable the city and landowners to make long-range planning decisions and their own development decisions regarding future development and subdivision within the plan area. The area comprises 16 quarter sections in the northeast corner of the city. The ASP was developed based on the requirements of the intermunicipal development plan and the municipal development plan. Whoops, went too far. The area structure plan is consistent with the municipal development plan and the IDP with respect to the future land use for the area, which is commercial industrial. It's also consistent with the, I guess, the motive for doing the annexation of that area in the first place. When we did the plan, we worked with a number of stakeholders in the plan area. We had a fairly robust engagement process. This included a open house as a, as a team introduction in October of 2017. Then in November of 2017, we held two separate sessions, one specifically for landowners as a workshop and the second one was an open house for landowners where we kind of rolled out some of the ideas that, that we had heard on November 21st. July of this year, we did a presentation of the draft ASP to the landowners. In November, we did a final presentation of the final draft of the ASP and obviously we're here tonight to recommend council make a decision on the ASP.
So to give you an overview of the plan concept, the plan area is a little over 1,000 hectares in the city's northeast. The current land use is predominantly agricultural, but there are some medium and light industrial uses as well as several residences. On the topography map, this is just some background information that we include in the plan. You can show, you can see that there's a range of slopes in the area, but nothing very steep. Our natural features inventory revealed that there are significant areas of possible wetlands. This data was collected based on aerial photo assessments and so these are approximate areas, but the information will be refined at the outline plan stage through biophysical reports. These represent areas that could be constraints to development. They are also opportunities to enhance for recreational purposes. We also included information on existing oil and gas facilities in the area that could cause restrictions for development. For instance, the orange buffer that you're seeing is a 1,500 meter buffer from a sour gas well and that is a recommended distance from an urban center. So it's fitting that we have commercial and industrial rather than residential uses in the area in consideration of some of these facilities. The overall land use concept is predominantly commercial and industrial. So starting from the top of the legend in the bright orange, we have regional commercials. So that is things such as power centers. You might see a gateway, so a mix of commercial uses, big box stores, that type of facilities. And so we've had them at either end of the plan area. So on the east end, it is to provide services to the large area of residential lands surrounding it, to the, to the west and to the south. And on the eastern end, it is to take advantage of the adjacency to Highway 670 and the potential future alignment of an eastern ring road. Along Highway 670, also known as 132nd Avenue, we propose highway commercial slash industrial. So that would be predominantly our commercial arterial district. So you would expect lighter industrial type uses like large truck washes as well as highway commercial businesses such as big box stores or a variety of other services. A large portion of the plan area is also light industrial. So that would be our IB industrial business and general industrial district. So again, lighter industrial uses such as large vehicle washes, recycling depots, minor automotive repair facilities. And then in the northern portion, what we see is the dark purple representing medium to heavy industrial. So this would be heavier industrial uses that might require outdoor laydown yards where we would want them spaced slightly further away from residential uses or high visibility areas. Some of the other information such as the wastewater drainage parkways, I'll get into in some of the later maps. Here we have a breakdown of the land use composition. It just reiterates what I previously explained. So most of the area, 62% roughly, will be industrial uses. These areas are approximate and will be refined at the outline plan stage depending on the demands of development. Here we have the open space concept. As you can see, the red lines represent recreational trails and so we tried to align those with future waste, sorry, stormwater parkways and natural drainage channels that currently exist. So these areas would be augmented using municipal reserve land in addition to whatever environmental reserve is required in order to provide recreation spaces. And we attempted to also provide connectivity to other recreation networks such as going into the county. We propose two large recreation areas. So one of them in the southwest area of the plan is split in two. This one is envisioned to be a large recreation opportunities. With this plan, given the large area, it is one of our opportunities to consider the city's long-range recreation needs. Because it's so large, the amount of MR for the entire plan area would create a significant recreation area. And so by using a comprehensive plan process, we're able to accumulate it into one large area rather than having several spread out across a lot of quarter sections. So we envision this to be the equivalent of South Bear Creek in the north of the city where there would be a large number of recreation fields that can meet needs for tournaments and long-term recreation needs in the northeast. The recreation area proposed in the somewhat central area of the plan would be a somewhat smaller recreation site. We envision something similar to Dave Bar where there might be an indoor facility. And the process for collecting this MR is slightly different than what we would typically propose. In this instance, the city would need to purchase a significant portion of the land to create these sites and recuperate the costs through cash and lieu from municipal reserve in development of the rest of the planned area. And this is a way that we can get such large recreation sites. The transportation network is reflective of the general principles in the city's master plan. The city's master plan does not currently stipulate large-scale development in the area. So we propose the standard concept using a grid for the major road network. It does not currently indicate local roads, although it does show some areas where the county roads would connect in to the plan area. And the area was reviewed and supported by our engineering department. We included more regional information so you can see the potential future alignment of the east ring road as identified in the intermunicipal development plan as well as how the area might connect to the highway to the north. Here we have the water plant servicing plan. It is consistent with Aqua Terra's master plans. It is a concept to show how the area may be serviced. We are aware of other servicing in the area such as lines in the counties that may be accessible, but that would require agreements between the county, the city, Aqua Terra and the developer. And so this is the concept from Aqua Terra's master plans that show how the area could be serviced. Similarly, the wastewater master plan is reflective of Aqua Terra's long-term plan for the area. And these concepts may be updated in the future as development progresses depending on Aqua Terra's needs. Here we have the storm drainage concept. This is based on the latest version of the draft storm, stress storm drainage master plan that the city is currently developing. The principles supporting this plan are to enhance natural drainage for stormwater facilities rather than focusing on engineered storm ponds. So as you may have noticed, the storm parkway areas are also the potential wetlands. Now, I want to clarify about this concept that these are very generalized areas. So some of it covers residences and subdivided parcels. Now, this is just based on those aerial photos and the exact alignment and size will be decided through detailed engineering work at the outline plan stage. So as a requirement of any ASP, we're, we need to delineate future outline plan areas. An outline plan is typically a quarter section. So this just indicates the quarter sections as they are. There isn't any significant development in the area that would affect the scale of an outline plan at this stage. Similarly, we have phasing. It's a requirement of any area structure plan. We see that development will most likely occur going from the west to the east because that is where existing development is and servicing as well. So we assume that the progression will go from the currently developed area out towards the east. The ASP, though it creates standards for the long-term development of the area, actually provides greater opportunity for interim development than residents would have without the plan because it indicates special considerations that the city will give that aren't currently indicated anywhere such as the municipal development plan. So the first provision, which is in the municipal development plan, is allowing for up to four parcels out for commercial, industrial or institutional development. That is currently a development right as per the municipal development plan. Now, where the ASP adds to that is that the city will consider the use of rural road cross-sections for the area on a case-by-case basis. And the engineering department will also consider onsite servicing for development, including potentially onsite fire protection measures. As long as it meets building code, engineering will consider these on a case-by-case basis. So there is opportunity for development to occur in the area prior to an outline plan and full-scale development. So the proposed concept will provide for the city's long-term industrial and commercial needs in the northeast as well as taking a proactive approach to accumulating large recreation areas. Planning and Development believes that this will help support development in the cities and its long-term needs and we recommend that council support this document. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Welton, Mr. Deroche. Any questions for administration before I open the public hearing for questions, comments from the public? Councillor Blackburn.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I was just wondering about the buffer zone for the gas plant. It appears to overlap an area where there would be quite a bit of both light and medium industrial and also, also the concept of regional commercial. And we all know that these buffer zones are in place primarily to, to save residences. However, the same people that live in those houses are the people that work in these sites and possibly 25 hours a day based on shift work for industrial. And so I'm just wondering what the effects are and whether or not there's any concern about the, the overlap.
Through the mayor, the, we don't really have any particular concern over it. I mean, certainly oil and gas facilities exist throughout the region. Certainly they're better off being further away from residential development. The province has a very rigorous procedure, like approved procedure and also safety plans that, that oil and gas companies need to have in place. The other element is, is that a lot of these facilities come and go over time. And like a, a working sour gas well or sour gas facility might exist in for, say, five years or 10 years. Once it's shut down, the, this buffer zone obviously disappears. The, I guess, what, what I will conclude with is that as the city grows into this area, the city and the provincial regulator need to just stay vigilant over, over what is being proposed that, that the provincial regulator recirculated all development to ensure that the, what is happening is consistent with the buffer plans was consistent with their safety plans and evacuation plans and that sort of thing. So there was a lot of regulation to ensure that this can be done safely. It's just a matter of making sure that the city and the regulator and the developers are all kind of working together to make sure that that comes about. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Blackburn. Councillor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple of questions about infrastructure in the area. I know that's been one of the big, since I've heard from landowners is wondering, will they ever get service? And what does that look like in the future? My first question is, in the report, I mentioned we might consider investing in infrastructure in the area in the future, but is there an identified process of how we consider, do we want to invest in roads or water service or invest more in an area like this?
Through the mayor, the, I would say that it is not part of the land use planning process. It certainly could become part of the city's economic development process or economic development strategy. You know, from as far as a formal process would go, if the city was considered.
We're happy to hear the end of your answer, by all means.
I think I got what I wanted there.
Yeah, yeah. No, uh, yeah, there's, I mean, certainly like the city budget process and, you know, the city's long-term capital projects, those sorts of things are obviously formal processes for the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, just to supplement that, I think, you know, ultimately there's sort of two layers here. The land use planning is sort of, is the one and then council's decision of whether or not they wish to advance the development of an area by sort of pre-investing in infrastructure is the other choice. That's, you know, the other opportunity, but that's sort of independent of planning for what will develop there over time.
And if I may ask a couple more questions about infrastructure? Two more I got is, one, just talking about, there's the mention that there's wastewater service available in the county about 100 meters away from here, but it's not available to the city. If you could give me a bit in and say to that, and specifically I'm trying to figure out, is there a technical reason that's, that's not available to the city or is that an agreement and a political reason?
Uh, through the mayor, I think it's just like a physical thing. I think if a developer that was in proximity to that area requested that to Aqua Terra that they tie in, then that would be essentially a, I guess, an agreement or, you know, a, you know, sort of the servicing arrangement between Aqua Terra and any landlord. I think it was, like the reference was to wastewater, which is obviously an Aqua Terra thing.
Yeah. So just to be clear then, when it says it's unavailable in the city, that just means nobody's on that hookup yet. Not that those hookups aren't technically possible.
I'm not aware that it's, I believe it's technically possible.
Okay. Awesome. And then if I may, one final question? My final question is just the discussion about by default, we'll, for road cross-sections, by default, we'll be urban cross-sections. We'll consider rural on a case-by-case basis. That's another thing that I do hear a lot about industry developing different areas. I was curious, what does that evaluation of whether urban or rural be allowed look like and who ultimately makes that decision?
Through the mayor, my impression is, is that at the end of the day, the developer kind of decides. You know, there's a lot of things that go into the consideration. The city obviously hasn't or has rural cross-sections, has urban cross-sections. You know, the city is always open to provide alternative cross-sections or, or, you know, if, if an applicant is looking for something specific, excuse me. The calculation with respect to whether a rural cross-section or an urban cross-section is better for the developers complex and, I mean, there's a cost component. You know, a rural cross-section might be more expensive, but it takes up far less land. So depending on the cost of the land, the rural might balance out. It might, the developer obviously has to consider what sort of customers he's looking for. So whether it's going to be urban and rural is complex and it's something that a developer would kind of need to, would need to evaluate and, and obviously have discussion and consultation with the city about. Cause at the end of the day, the city would take over those roads. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just have a question about with it being industrial. Is there still going to be an opportunity if somebody wanted to do a house and a shop? Like that sort of environment or does it need to be strictly industrial for the applications coming in after that?
Through the mayor, so there is a potential for farmstead separation to still be considered on a case-by-case basis. That is what they're allowed for residential under the MDP currently. There may be additional considerations for greater residential subdivision in these areas based on other ASPs that are proposing residential uses. But in this one, it would most likely just be one farmstead separation that we would entertain.
Okay. So if there was a current quarter that already maybe had a couple of farmsteads broke out of it and they wanted to buy the remaining, say, 120 acres in that quarter, would they be able to, to put a house in a shop or potentially in that scenario? Or would that already be not available to them because that's been already taken off in that quarter?
Mr. Welton, Mr. Deroche?
Through the mayor, if, if, using, I think I understand your scenario that there's quarter section, two lots for subdivided out. Each one has a house. The balance of the quarter section does not have a house. I believe that the land use bylaw would allow that. The idea is not, there's, you know, the provisions in the ASP is that you couldn't, you couldn't carve up a whole bunch more. you couldn't carve up a whole bunch more lots and, and start putting houses on them because over time, the, the area is going to become industrial. And over time, basically, that industrial is just going to create a nuisance for the land, the residential landlords. So, I mean, part of, I guess, part of the, sort of the big picture message is when an area is slated for future industrial, certainly, we would discourage people from creating a whole bunch of residential lots that would then create land use compatibility problems down the road and, you know, create problems for the city and, you know, some, you know, and some objection to maybe much-needed development, like, you know, some, much-needed industrial development, let me put it that way.
Yeah, no, I can appreciate that. I just, I guess, a concern that we don't have an option for that for residents currently in the city that, you know, if they wanted to, the county, you know, there's a lot of people to buy a 10 or 20 acre piece of land because they know they can put a house and a shop and they can run their trucks and everything out of it. And it's, it's just an opportunity, I'd like the city, the city to be able to, to take advantage of if it's there, but it sounds like they probably still could in this scenario, or potentially still could. My other question was just around the, the, the big, the three kind of recreational parks. I just wanted, I think I understand what Mr. Deroche was saying, I just want to clarify. So if I was in phase eight, and I was the first guy that decided I was going to bring a quarter on, what would that, would I be able to just pay cash and lieu and there would be no MR on those quarters that we're going to put all the MR dedicated to these three specific sites? Are we still expecting to have MR and all of these quarter sections of land?
Mr. Deroche?
Thank you, through the mayor. So to clarify, we would be taking cash and lieu for the majority of the quarter sections and using those funds to either, in the future, buy the land for the recreation sites or recruit the costs of having already purchased it. There are some areas where we would be requiring some municipal reserve in order to enhance the natural drainage channels to provide for trails, but that would be a, a small amount. Majority would be cash and lieu.
Okay. And just on the, the, the three landowners that probably know who they are that have those little Rs on their lots now, if they came forward to develop, how would that scenario look? Because would, would we be actually in a scenario where we would be in, in purchasing land? Because it, it definitely takes away from their developability of bringing on a quarter for a bunch of its earmarked for MR. And it looks like it'd be an over dedication on some of those quarters of what would be MR.
Yes, through the mayor, the, the recreation sites at the southwest would, would be in excess of the 10%, and therefore the city would, would likely have to purchase some of the land. The north recreation site, the way we've identified it on the open space map, it is kind of, it sits on the property line between two landowners, and therefore those two quarter sections, if they each provided the, the municipal reserve as land, then we would get that entire site without having to purchase it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Plott. I don't see any questions for administration at this time from council, and we will have another opportunity to counsel if anything else arises. But at this point, I'd like to open the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. So if there's anybody that came here this evening specifically to talk about the Northern Lights Area Structure Plan, now would be your opportunity to do that. I'm just looking, and once again, nobody's sort of rushing the stage, but I'll ask again if there's anybody that came this evening wishing to speak to the Northern Lights Area Structure Plan. Last opportunity, if anybody wanted to share their perspective on this, the Northern Lights Area Structure Plan, now would be your last opportunity to do that. And again, nobody coming forward, and so I'll just ask council if you have any further questions for administration before we close the public hearing and move on to business arising. Councillor Plott, question?
Just back to this, the recreational areas. So hypothetically, if somebody had a couple of those quarters that, that had the big Rs on them now, and they didn't want that recreational, they wanted to develop it, are we in a position that we could just move the recreational land to a different quarter that's currently allocated?
Mr. Deroche?
At the ASP stage, it is still conceptual, so there would be potential for an amendment to relocate the sites. It depends on, at what stage development is in the area. But we anticipate to be that, to be one of the first areas to develop, so those negotiations would take place nearly, early on, ideally.
Through the mayor, I also just wanted to mention, the reason why that big recreation site is where it is is because all of the land to the west and south is future city residential, and therefore these big recreation sites would be adjacent to a large residential population in the city. So that's why we put this big rec site where it is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So does, Mr. Welton, so does it essentially act as a, a buffer between that residential area and the commercial industrial area to the, to the north?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor. It's, it certainly has that function. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just a question here. I know we're at the early stages of this plan, but is there any development, pushing this development as it is right now? And, and if there is, when do you see that this could be started in the stages where the residents would have some idea?
Mr. Deroche?
Through the mayor, so we don't currently have any proposals for an outline plan or any extensive development at the time. The consideration here is that we want to be prepared when someone does come in for that, that we don't want to be the delaying factor that we have our planning in place.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Mr. Deroche. Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I, I do want to thank both of you. I went to both the first and last open house that was hosted on this, and it was great seeing landowners show up and engage and you guys answering questions. I was kind of curious, from your perspective, as you were talking to these landowners in the area and others that showed up, what were, were there any themes to the conversation? You heard from people coming, or what were, what were you guys hearing as you were developing this and how did it impact?
Mr. Deroche?
Thank you. So through the mayor, a lot of the comments we received were focused on specific transportation items, just building a, a road to connect that area of the city to the south, paving roads, that nature. That was kind of the biggest theme that we had. Welton, do you have anything to add?
Through me, I, I would, I would agree. Mostly what we were hearing were concerns about the existing transportation network and, and I guess sort of they were, there was either questions or, or people looking for hope that, that the city would, was going to be, I guess, proactively undertaking projects that were going to improve traffic in the area. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Thanks, Councillor Bressi. Then I will close the public hearing. We'll move on to business arising, and I would look for motion for first reading. Councillor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would like to move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1371, being the Northern Lights Area Structure Plan.
Thanks very much, Councillor Blackburn. We have no discussion or debate on first reading, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Blackburn.
Thank you. I move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1371.
Thanks very much, Councillor Blackburn. Motion for second reading is open for discussion and debate. Any council members wish to ring in? Councillor Bressi?
Great, thank you, Mayor Given. I'll be, I'll be voting yes, and again, I want to thank management for their work on this. I just hope that, I want to echo that as I talked to people in this area and as I went to the open houses, I definitely heard the same concern over transportation networks. And I hope that now that we've approved a plan, that we'll have some proactive conversations about, do we, about do we want to do work to service, to bring more services to these areas? I don't know what the answer to that is, but I definitely think it's an intentional conversation we need to be having as we're bringing plans for this and Hughes Lake and other areas online.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Bressi. Any other discussion or debate on second reading? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. Councillor Blackburn would like to do third reading, a motion to have third reading, sorry? And you'll just have to get your microphone, Councillor Blackburn, after we've gone off, off of you in the queue.
Yeah. I would like to move that council have third reading of bylaw C-1371 at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Councillor Blackburn. So this is a motion to have third and final reading here this evening. In order for us to move on to third reading and close it off, this motion to have third reading must pass unanimously. If it doesn't pass unanimously, then third and final reading would come back at our next council meeting. Is there any discussion or to the debate as to the merits of having third and final reading? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Blackburn, so we can indeed have third and final reading?
Thank you. I would move that council give third, uh, reading to bylaw C-1371, being the Northern Lights Area Structure Plan.
Thanks very much, Councillor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and that handles all of the business on our public hearings for this evening. And thank you to administration. It's good to see the organization continue to move forward with the vision behind the city's annexation from a number of years ago, ensuring that there is land that's able and ready for development as best as we can sort of possibly make that happen in support of the market. So thanks very much to the planning team for that. So we have no items of unfinished business this evening and no reports, and I believe that takes us to committee business. And the first one up is Councillor O'Toole with the Corporate Services Committee meeting from December 4th. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very, very much, Mayor Given. I do have the Corporate Services Committee meeting, and I move that council approve the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, December 4th, 2018, as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any errors or omissions, anything that we need to catch in that set of minutes before we adopt them? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole?
I do have one motion, and that it would be council give first reading to borrowing bylaw C-1391. It's a long-term debt consolidation and refinancing. We did have a good discussion on this, and we, we were concerned about a number of things, some of our council members, and we looked at some possibilities of investing some of the money to generate some revenue, so.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. That motion's open for discussion and debate. Oh, sorry, excuse me, this is first reading, so, excuse me, it is not open for discussion and debate. We'll have first reading this evening, and then the subsequent readings would come back in a future council meeting. Are we, can't still be in December, so we're looking for the start of the new year to have subsequent readings, Mr. City Manager? Yes? Okay. Okay, so this is a motion for first reading, excuse me, I was on a roll with all three readings of the public hearing previously, but so I will look for the vote on first reading of borrowing bylaw C-1391. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and so we will see the second and third readings of that borrowing bylaw coming forward at a subsequent council meeting. Councillor O'Toole, anything else that you want to highlight from that side?
Just keep it short and sweet here. We did have a verbal update from the Corporate Services Director on some of the topics that were discussed was the assessment and taxation. The assessors are final, finalizing some of the assessments for next year and reviewing 2018 building permits. We had a corporate facility management staff are redesigning egress control options for the East Link and main front counter and second floor fitness area, and staff is preparing for year-end, and HR is, policy development is continuing. And we did have a segment talking about the acquitara shareholder resolutions and agreements due to, or with Wembley coming on board. And, yeah, that would be enough to consider we had a meeting.
It was a meeting. Okay, thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. That'll take us to 9.2 and the Pursuit of Excellence Committee meeting from Wednesday, December 12th. I think, Councillor Freezon, that was your set of minutes, wasn't it?
Thank you. So this was our last meeting of the year, so we had the remainder of our funds to get rid of, which we didn't quite do, but we sure gave it a college try. We were able to give funds to Ian Stobie for mixed martial arts. He's attending, attended, or attended a ten-day training session in Montreal at TriStar Gym, which is apparently where Georges Saint Pierre, yeah, so that was, that was pretty impressive. Some coach development funding, again, for the same gym, for Louise Martinez for mixed martial arts. He's Mr. Stobie's coach. And Sydney Kinderwater for judo, we were funded to attend some training as well. Trinity, Trinity Smith for, sorry, we, we were not able to, we made a decision, a real distinction between some dance applications and, and sport applications. So there were a few dance applications that we did not entertain. We gave some money to Zachary Malmston for cross-country skiing and the Grand Prairie Figure Skating Club to host a clinic. We've got coach Robert Ostrom, oh, sorry, nope, that one was a duplicate. Figure skating, again, some coach development, again, for the Grand Prairie Figure Skating Club. Drew Rogers received some funds for Air One certification. He's a snowboard coach. And some travel funding, again, for Zachary Malmston. This is a, a separate application for cross-country skiing. And we also awarded some Come Fly With Me funds to a number of folks, one that, so there was, there's Kieran Goldhawk, Zach Momston, and Elizabeth Gustafson for pistol shooting, and she's actually aiming for an Olympic bid, so that's pretty cool. And then we also named Bob Newfeld scholarships to Zachary Momston for cross-country skiing, Sydney Kinderwater for judo, and McKenna Pruden for cross-country skiing, and the Perki McCullough scholarships for Mitchell Dubey, for canoe polo, and Elizabeth Gustafson for shooting again. So it was a, a great meeting to be able to hand out the majority of our funds for this year. Thank you.
And thanks very much for that update and overview. Can we get a motion to adopt that set of minutes as well, please? Councillor Freezon, can we get a?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes. Um, um, adopt as presented. Sorry, I didn't know if it needed to come from someone else. Yes, I'd like to move that those be adopted.
Thanks very much, Councillor Freezon. Any discussion or debate on this, on the set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions to correct? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and it sounds like it was a busy committee. Great to see the city be able to support so many different athletes in our community so they can get to the best of their abilities. That handles all of our committee business for this evening. Councillor Bressi, do you have something further on committee business?
Oh, sorry, I was jumping there again.
Okay, okay. So that maybe this is where we're going, down to delegation business. We had Mr. Engen presenting with respect to the city being able to support an initiative around support for oil and gas and pipelines, and potentially I would suggest since Bill C-69 is one of the issues that can impact that the most, we may want to consider that as well. Councillor Bressi?
Great, well, thank you, Mayor Given. I know that usually with delegation business, we send it to committee for discussion, but today I'd like to suggest that we don't do that, seeing as we've got a Christmas break and there's an urgency in Ottawa. And so I'm going to make a motion to direct some action today, and my motion is I would direct the mayor to write a letter to the Prime Minister, premier, Alberta senators, and other appropriate officials expressing support and concern for the peace country, energy industry, and the need for approval of Alberta pipelines. And just to speak to this a little bit, I think yesterday our community really showed that this is a type of action that they'd be very supportive of us taking. I was proud to be standing out of the, proud as part of the grassroots as a community member, and I'd like to, now that I'm in my official council role, I'd like to be able to vote, to vote on this as well. So I was proud to have a grassroots role. I'd love to speak as a councillor in support of this.
Thanks, Councillor Bressi. Councillor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. If I can just ask that Councillor Bressi have a more specific in support request of Bill C-69 in the correspondence? I think it is very timely and would be more impactful with, with, at a minimum, some addressing of a current bill that's in legislation. Thank you.
Councillor Bressi, are you open to sort of accepting that?
Yeah, I'm very open to friendly amendment, or if you, or if, if an actual amendment gets moved, I'd vote it. Just a caution I want is I, is to, to be perfectly honest, I'm not really educated enough if the best course of action is to kill this bill or to significantly overhaul it. And so I'm hesitant to, to put my support behind a specific action and just be completely honest, I know there's big problems with the bill as it is, but I'm hesitant to give my opinion on whether it's kill or completely overhaul.
Sure. Well, I think, I think if the concept is to provide the city of Grand Prairie's perspective on appropriate amendments or changes required in Bill C-69, then that's probably a way to do it. Certainly, I know for us, when things are in committee, that's where we can actually do the work of trying to dial something in so that it actually is useful. the work of trying to dial something in so that it actually is useful. And I think if we can make the point that if Bill C-69 doesn't meet the needs of industry communities like ours, then it shouldn't continue. And potentially if we can identify ways that it could be improved. I know that I always appreciate when somebody comes to us with sort of a solution, proposing ideas. And I think our administration team can probably work with industry to identify what those specific measures are. And so if council's comfortable with that, I'd really like to see that included in the, in the motion. So if we're, if we're comfortable with that, is there any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. And that motion carries unanimously. And I think that that was all of our delegation business for this evening. Mr. Engen, thanks for sticking around and watching to make sure that it went through towards the end there. We have no notices of motion this evening. And that's, so that'll take us council member reports. And we had a number of council members with reports from our external agencies, boards, and commissions. We'll start with councillor O'Toole first and the Combatant Sports Commission. Councillor O'Toole.
Well, Dylan, you can start laughing now. We did have Festival of Fist Number Three. And the event included components or battens from Ontario, Manitoba, British Columbia, Saskatchewan, and many local fighters. We had two female fighters. One lady was from Grand Prairie area, one lady was from the Kelowna area. And it come to a draw. There was three athletes that did not meet our medicals. Blood tests weren't brought in on time. So the bouts were canceled from happening. But in all, in all, it's a pretty good event, uneventful, but eventful.
An uneventful yet eventful event.
That's exactly right. That was a great event.
Want to make sure that I heard that right? Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. The next up is the Disabled Transportation Society. Councillor Freezin.
Thank you. So Disabled Transportation Society, DTS, had, we had a meeting last week. And as you know, they've been going through some union negotiations. And they were very pleased to be able to say that they had reached an agreement. And it's favorable. Certainly meets the, the needs of the employees of DTS and also was palatable to the, to the society. So that should be ratified soon. And that was kind of the, the big news there. We're still just awaiting a couple of things. We're waiting for the ED to develop and perhaps amend some of the criteria for eligibility for riding on DTS, which is important in impacting the, the current ridership, of course, and the, addressing the, the growing need in our community. And just determining where that cutoff is. So it's an important thing to, to figure out. And that will be coming forward in the next month or so, we, we anticipate.
Thanks very much councillor Freezin. That brings us to Grand Prairie Library Board. Councillor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. We did meet on the 11th of December and I'm pleased to report that our, our new library director, Debbie Kreiderman, has already rolled up her sleeves and is hard at work. She and her very capable staff have already looked at, looking at having fewer restrictions on some of the meeting rooms in the library so that those meeting rooms can be used by a broader spectrum of people. And they also streamline the processes that involve materials coming into the library through the Peace Library System so that there is less paperwork and less traffic moving materials about. Off to a very good start and looking forward to working with Ms. Kreiderman in the future.
Great. Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. And Grand Prairie Sports Council, councillor Freezin.
Thank you. So the ED there has been, that's Karina Grinchide. She's been very busy in all three kinds, or three kinds of roles as an advisor, an advocate, and an educator. She completed a STEAM report for the 2019, and that's the economic impact and cost report for 2019 Can West Short Track Speed Skating. So that's hopeful. Served as grant adjudicator for 21 recreation and physical activity grants, including two that came back for, to the Pursuit of Excellence. And had been doing, she's been doing a lot of educating. The 18 people attended a sport injury prevention workshop over the last month. And there were, Karina did two presentations to Rotary, asked by different people on the committee for speakers. One was on youth initiatives, which includes that try day where you can go and try out different activities and economic impact of sport events in Grand Prairie. And she also participated in a sport admin management panel for GPRC Sport Admin Class. So as busy as she is, the, the board has authorized the hiring of a new admin assistant. So that process is underway now. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Freezin. Councillor Plott, you had Trimestral Industrial Partnership?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Yeah, we had the, sorry, it was actually the Joint Recreation Committee that I wanted to speak about. So the county was host here last time, just last week. There was some conversation. So I guess for the, the Joint Recreational Committees is part of our, it's all the municipalities in the area. I think most councillors are aware of it, but just to speak to a little bit. One of the, the recreational called the Wapiti Recreational Area Overview was presented. So this is a piece of land that's a gravel pit remediation that's out on the county. Going down to the, I guess, the bridge on, on Highway 40. So they're looking at doing an off-leash dog park, a wetland remediation project, some day use. And actually a path system that will link up to the new bridge. It was, that it was announced that we'll have a, a path on it as well. So this would get connectivity rate from the north end of the city all the way out to the, to the Wapiti River, which was kind of cool. Talk about the assessment. And so this is going to be the fun one on, I think, what this committee is trying to figure out when new facilities are built. Who will pay how much for them and how that'll look. So we did bring up pickleball because that's something that we had discussed in budget here. And we did bring up pickleballs to try to throw in the system and model it to see how it'll come out. I'll caution council that if it doesn't look, I'll probably be bringing that back in, you know, February or March through a committee because I still would like to see pickleball happen. We did have a conversation that we wanted it to go through joint rec. We did task administration do a little bit more work on the model itself and how we're going to look at the assessment and maybe the, the city that it was born in. Might have to be a little bit more and just, you know, trying to get our head around how this assessment will look. They did model out some of the things in the area. And of course, it had concerns of just, we all operate facilities at a different level and a different expectation. The city's expectation, I think, is a little bit higher on how we operate facilities. So there was concerns from some of the smaller municipalities of why it would cost so much to operate compared to how they operate, which is being, some of them being operated by ag societies and different things. So, so good conversations. And we'll have another one in March. But I think I captured most of what was on that meeting. I know councillor Bressi was there as well. So if there's anything else, I'm hoping he'll jump in. Thanks.
Thanks very much councillor Plott. That'll take us to Grand Spirit Foundation. Councillor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, the Grand Spirit Foundation full board met on the 7th of December. It was our organizational meeting as well. And so elected as the new chairman is Judy Kokotol Beckarus from Beaver Lodge. She's a councillor in the Beaver Lodge council. And our vice chairman is Alvin Hubert, who is the Reeve of the Saddle Hills County. And I've been appointed to the Labor Negotiations Committee. So I'll have some work to do in, I think, in the February, March time, timeframe for that. At the request of residents a few months ago, there was a a review of the smoking policy at the properties that Grand Spirit Foundation operates. And so as a result, there is a new policy that's going to take effect on the 1st of January. And that all of the facilities will be non-smoking facilities, including in people's rooms. And so it will take effect on the 1st of January, but those people who have been allowed to smoke in their rooms up until now will have until May to make other arrangements for that. So there's a small amount of grandfathering involved. One of the other things that we noticed in our discussions was a need to advocate to the province regarding the revenue that comes from the sale of older buildings. We have a number of older homes that we are selling because they're, they're no longer viable to rent out. And the issue is that when that happens, the province takes the revenue, since they own the properties, they take their revenues into their general revenue. And we're hoping that they will consider giving the money back to the, to the boards so that we can replace the old properties with newer ones. So that's one of the things we'll be advocating for in the next while. Those are the main highlights.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. And councillor Bressi, I believe you attended the Northern Elected Leaders Meeting recently on the city's behalf.
That's correct. So I got to go up to Slave Lake. I had a great road trip with Reeve Bopray and got to go with a whole bunch of elected officials from northern Alberta to meet with the premier and eight cabinet ministers were in attendance. I was really surprised. I thought it'd be something where you listen to them talk the whole time and you maybe get a few conversations you're mingling. So I went with my talking points on MSI and my elevator pitch on that. And then they ended up sitting us down in a room with about 15 of us and two cabinet ministers. And the group got an hour to grill them and then the cabinet ministers rotated. And so all of a sudden I got to ask way more questions than I expected. And I was really glad to be in a room with Reeve Bopray and Don Nadiak from GPRC because they helped carry the weight for our region. And we had great conversations about everything from rail, from railway and how capacity is going to happen as more oil goes on railways to expanding, expanding spreads of ships across the province, to finding proper funding for our social agencies to do professional development and care, to infrastructure funding, as we got to here on Friday. That got teased a number of times that we were going to hear about that. I think that something, something that was significant too was the conversations I got to have with other elected officials at the municipal level. I learnt a lot about rural broadband. Don't know if, how relevant it is to us, but it's sure an interesting thing. But something that really did pop out at me was, I think I had four different municipalities ask me about our Housing Development Corporation. And so that's something that's got a notice in our neck of the woods. And that's, that's exciting for me. Also a little bit of, I guess there's some pressure to do something good with it. But maybe there's also some partners in the region if, if we want that and if we want to look at something outside of our border. But I don't know what to do with that, but I thought it was significant that four different municipalities that don't border us were asking me about it.
Great. Thanks very much councillor Bressi. Were there any other reports from the external agencies, boards, and commissions? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll just give a brief update on AUMA, Alberta Urban Municipalities Association. Last week I was in Edmonton for two days. The first day was a meeting of the AMSC Board, which is the Alberta Municipal Services Corporation. It's the business arm of AUMA. The board meeting was setting out sort of the work plan for 2019. And one of the items of interest to me is, I'm learning more about the operations of AMSC, was that the city of Grand Prairie is a member of what's called an insurance reciprocal. And so it basically means that the city of Grand Prairie and other municipalities join together to act as sort of insurers, the owners of this reciprocal product where we basically all contribute to the pot and it pays out. And so we kind of have, and it covers up to a certain amount of, of about $10 million of liability. Anything in excess of that is out on the sort of global risk market. And so the AUMA CEO and some of the staff on the AMSC business side actually traveled to London to meet with Lloyds of London and sort of those global insurers to find out what that type of coverage for municipalities is going to cost. And one observation was that they're hearing from those sort of global markets that insurance rates are going to see some really significant increases over the next, next, in 2019 and the coming years as a result of some of the really massive losses that have been happening with respect to hurricanes and other traumatic events around the world. And our participation in that insurance reciprocal means that at least that first $10 million of liability coverage or of, not liability coverage rather, of insurance coverage is actually based on the risk around Alberta. And so it's a way for us to sort of almost hedge a little bit and say, well, we're not completely attached to the global risk profile. And when they have a multi-billion dollar damage from a hurricane in a coastal area, that's not a risk we have to worry about and it doesn't have as direct an impact. And also that insurance reciprocal has had some good years over the last while. And it means that it has additional equity inside of it. And it allows AUMA to actually mitigate any impacts from that sort of global portion of the risk. And so if we find that those global insurers rates are going up in 2019, the insurance reciprocal has the ability to mitigate that impact on the insurance rates that the city of Grand Prairie would pay. Super fascinating stuff. I can tell you're all wrapped and, and would love to hear more, but we can't possibly do it all tonight. So we'll just give you that little bit of a teaser. The second day of the meetings was actually with the AUMA Board itself around the lobbying and advocacy. And a major feature of that was the continuing discussion between the provincial government, AUMA and RMA with respect to a replacement municipal funding framework. As council will know, the two large cities in the context of the city charters reached a deal with the province on municipal funding past 2022. And the board adopted a position, a position that essentially said, we're not looking for any deal that's any better than either the two large cities would have received. But also we expect to receive nothing less than what they, they received. And so you can know that your AUMA board is continuing to work with the province on that. I believe President Barry and the CEO were meeting with provincial officials this week. And AUMA expects to continue those negotiations on into January with the hope of having, having some resolution towards the end of the month and certainly before we get too far into the spring for, for obvious reasons. And with that, that's my AUMA update. And we'll move to council member roundtable and maybe we'll start with councillor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll just mention one thing tonight. And that was that I had the privilege of standing in your stead at the Chamber of Commerce Annual General Meeting and had the opportunity to swear in the new chairman of the, of the chamber for the upcoming year, Mr. Dan Wong. It was a pleasure to be part of the chamber proceedings and it looks like they're in for another very good year.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. Councillor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just want to highlight an event that actually happened here at that city hall. They transformed this room. The Christmas potluck that the city staff does here. I thought it was a really neat event. I've come to it a couple of times. But I, I just thought it was really cool to see the camaraderie with all the staff. It's a great feast. And what was neat about it was how much, I'm not sure how, how big the box got by the end, but there was a big food bank drive that was done by the staff. And just want to give a shout out for the staff that it was, it was a really good event. It's fun and I, I think that it supports a good cause. So it was well, I really appreciated it.
Thanks very much councillor Plott. Councillor Freezin?
I had to miss that one this year. I was sorry too. I want to talk about my hands down favorite thing this past couple of weeks was attending the Signature Support Services sod turning, but it wasn't really a sod turning. It was more of a wall smashing. But what was exciting for me about that is that I kind of hung out with the, the clients with whom Signature Support Services works. So lots of adults with developmental disabilities. And it was just such a, a pleasure to hear from them, the excitement and, and trying to imagine what that space is going to be like. So this is the old Peavy Mart building, of course, and it'll be turned into a number of different work areas for Signature Support Services. So that was a really, really a blast. And in particular, I was with a young woman by the name of Catherine whom, she's blind and, and I was able to describe to her what was happening when, when you were smashing the wall, Mayor Given. So that was very fun to be able to do that. And yeah, just sharing all of their, their joy for their new home to come. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Freezin. Councillor Minhaus?
Mayor Bell Given, and I went to lots of Christmas get-together. You can call party or whatever. Scores and best of catch-up, I mean, best association. The main thing was I was more happier to going to premier announce that our instruction. That was very good news for Grand Prairie area and I was appreciated. Lots of places met, but that was just normal. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Minhaus. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I have nothing to report. Thanks.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I too want to highlight the Signature Support Services brick breaking day. It was a little over three years ago when they started that process. And because of some things going on, it was delayed for the last three years. But I know that But I know that it's going to be a fantastic facility. The Bottle Depot now has got some pretty space age technology when it comes to sorting. And the new facility that they're putting in will even outdo that. So the speed and the safety is really well considered, so thank you.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Council Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The first one I want to highlight is I went to the launch of the County Connector and that was a proud moment for me. I've worked with many teenagers and I know many families who work and go to school in our city every day and that's going to make their lives significantly better. So I was proud of that one and I'm really looking forward to us working with our regional partners to make this a better community, not just a better area within city limits to live. So I was proud of that and I'm excited for what more is going to come in those collaborations in the future. Two others I'll highlight is yesterday I was at the Open House for Technical Search and Rescue. And it's an organization that I've always appreciated the need of. I don't know if I appreciated how unique of one we have here in Grand Prairie. A few examples, I knew about all the rescuing things, but I didn't realize that they don't just rescue humans, they also rescue large animals. And three or two of the three people trained for equine rescue in Northern Alberta are here in Grand Prairie. That's kind of cool. I didn't realize that they spend, that something they do is they help the RCMP with evidence searches. So that was something new to me. And also, I didn't know this, but ours is the only technical search and rescue in the province that can do advanced life saving. And so that's a degree of medical care that they can give and nobody else can give. And I think that says something about the trust that they've developed with our province and the dedication they have as well. So that was a fun organization to learn about. And then one I'll highlight, just for pure fun, it was probably my favorite part of the month was I got to go and deliver some Christmas cheer and snacks to city staff. I really appreciated the chance to wish our staff Merry Christmas and tell them thank you for the work that they do and tell them that myself and our city was proud, proud of them. I had fun going on a mini road trip around town with Mr. Galante. And I think the real highlight was him, I and Mr. Miller got to go see some of preschool kids in Dave Bar. And they were going tobogganing that day. I got to see a lot of snow helmets. And they were excited that when three males walked into their room and it was hard for us to get out of there. And it was really cute and really fun, so I'm really glad that I got to do that.
Thanks very much, Council Bressi. So I will highlight a couple of events that haven't previously been mentioned. The count, the launch of the County Connector bus was mentioned, but I also want to highlight for council that I probably engaged in some of the most effective advocacy and lobbying that I have ever done. Because after the launch of the County Connector with Transportation Minister, myself and Reeve Bopray and the other chief elected officials from the towns and the village and the region had a chance to sit down privately with Minister Mason. And we pressed him for the need for improvements to Highway forty and ensured that he knew just how vital that was going to be. We also spoke about the need for improvements along Highway forty-three, particularly, you know, the, the concerns around the intersection. And I would point out that, you know, later that Friday, you know, Friday later on that week, not just four days later, the premier actually did come and announce, you know, nearly a hundred and sixty million dollars of improvements. And so I just wanted to point out to council that, you know, really that is probably the most effective lobbying that this region has ever done. You know, on the, it might have been that there were other meetings in advance that really sort of led the way to...
You're saying this was all up to you, huh?
Well, it was a regional effort. You know, if, I think if all of the mayors and the Reeve hadn't have met with Minister Mason, that announcement likely wouldn't have happened. Well, maybe, maybe, yeah. But in all seriousness, I think that that's a good example of our region working together over a long period of time. Back at our AUMA convention, the MD of Greenview, the County of Grand Prairie and, and myself, representing the city, met with Minister Mason again, you know, back in September to do that. And, 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 and. And I think that that's a good example of the region collaborating together. And when we do that, I think often our voice is heard with the government and that was a great example of that. I mentioned that I had gone to Edmonton for the AMSC Board of Governors Meeting and the AUMA Board of Directors Meeting. While I was there, I also had an opportunity to stop in at CTV Edmonton to record an interview, a year-end interview for Alberta Primetime that aired on Friday, the fourteenth, a couple times and was my pleasure to speak about sort of the oil and gas activity that's happening in our region. I referenced nautical and a number of the other exciting things that are happening in the Grand Prairie area. And also sort of teased the announcement that was coming the next day and sort of recognized the importance of, of infrastructure in, in our region. But a great opportunity to go down and certainly appreciate the Alberta Primetime crew looking to extend their reach. I know that they've had the mayors of Lethbridge, Red Deer on previously, and I think that they're looking to have more of that mid-sized city perspective from across the province reflected in their program. And they said that that might be something they try and do more often. So it was a pleasure to be able to do that on behalf of the city. And then on Friday, the fourteenth, in addition to that other big news, I was able to take part in a meeting with some members of city staff and representatives from the RCMP detachment who are meeting with the federal crown, the chief federal prosecutor to talk, to speak about prosecution, federal prosecution services in our community and region. And it was an interesting dialogue to, to be a part of and certainly look forward to working with the chief federal prosecutor to ensure that our community is well-served in that area. You know, the City of Grand Prairie is only directly in control of how many police officers we choose to put, choose to fund. But there are other really important parts of that sort of law and justice system that need to have adequate capacity as well for it to be really effective. And that ongoing dialogue with the federal Crown Prosecutor, as well as the provincial Crown is another part of that, that ultimately leads to the need for more justices sitting in the region so that they can hear cases and eventually to courtroom space. As they say, all good things in time, but it was great to be a part of that conversation at this sort of early stage. And with that, I have nothing else to report and we'll call our meeting adjourned.